Welcome to the Attorney's Court. We'll start with the formated we have here. Bedford Street.
I've given everybody a copy of it and this gentleman is going to present it to you. Do this. It's an application.
Oh, this is next to the oil change. Or next to the oil change. What's currently there? Is this the oil change shop?
I thought it was car wash.
Car wash.
Yes.
I think it's oil change. That was just there today.
Tech club.
Tech club, yeah. The new version of it.
You know, lot was that big?
If you want to run through it, maybe.
Tell us who you are.
Have you been, were you involved with this originally? Or is this, are you new to this site? This lot?
We just work for the people that purchased.
Okay. Do you know what the origin story is in terms of why half of this was left open? Was it just left open in case someone else wanted to build something and nothing ever came? Or?
That's a Wayne question, Bud.
Yeah.
I was surprised they had such a big piece of property. You think, it looks like it satisfies if, I mean, that's the main thing. Does that lot remain?
I'm just curious of context.
Yeah. Do you know anything about that, Ruth? Do you remember this lot at all?
Can I be, go ahead?
Yes, sorry.
Whatever's left. My name is Peter Holden, Holden Engineering. And we work for the people that purchased this property. And I think they bought it partly because there was a tenant there. Partly because they saw the opportunity to create another lot. And they don't know what they're going to put there. But they just wanted to get through the subdivision process and so that they had the opportunity to do something. So it does meet all the zoning requirements. It's got 150 feet of frontage where it needs 125. The 40,000 square feet of area where it needs 20,000. All the monuments have been set or on the plan. And it's pretty straightforward.
Any comments?
Easement's taken care of.
What is the right of way easement?
The right of way is this is, this lot was part of a bigger subdivision that actually had a property behind it. And the right of way was left to access that. These properties access their land from the next street. So they don't really use it, but it's still there. It still burdens the lot.
Okay. Just trying to remember, there was a story behind, I mean, I didn't grow up in the town. There certainly Joe Biden enough times growing up when it was being built. But I don't remember if there was anything there or up back there notable 30 years ago before it was built. Or anything just to think about. Not that it really makes a difference because you meet all the setbacks. I'm just curious.
Make the official approval, not required.
Yeah. A second?
So Bob made the motion. Rick seconded. All those in favor of approving?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Yes.
Hold stack.
Yep. So if you can stack a lose, send that down. Take the money away. And then come out. No, just you need to sign that. But what says it? Yeah. Yep. Take that back. Do you want to move on to the zoning board agenda while they're signing?
Okay, guys, while the guys are signing this. Next item we'll take a look at is the zoning board of appeals agenda for October 13th, 2022. And this is something that Liz put in our packets tonight.
So I actually, I think I sent you the Robert English Road piece of it, but there were several other items on their agenda that I just got today.
First one.
I was having what the?
There's a cabana on nine Hunt Pond Lane, Hunt's Pond Lane. The lots on Robert English Road. An in-law for High Fields. And a sign at 11, I think it's 1145 Bedford Street B.
Is the zoning board aware of the covenant issues we've been wrestling with?
No. I would be happy to convey that to them.
Yeah, I just want them to have a full background of where things stand.
I have no issues with the zoning.
Okay.
He's good with the mallet.
Hmm? That's him right there. Mr. Holden.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Still looking for comments on the zoning?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, no comments.
Just the Robert English Way.
Uh, yeah, just to have them awareness of what we've been doing. Yeah. As well as any, the conditions, deed restrictions, all that sort of stuff. The letter was in here, so maybe that would just explain it all.
Bob, did you have any comments?
Nope.
Okay.
Do you want to go with the covenant on Roslin?
That would be the next thing we're going to do. So the next thing we're going to discuss is the request to release covenant held on Roslin Street. Mr. Riley?
Good evening, Chair and the rest of the board and Mrs. Shea. Sean Riley, 500 Washington Street, representing Abington Investments LLC. We are just trying to wrap up the subdivision file for the two lot subdivision on Roslin Street, which is off of Spruce Street. The board's very familiar with it.
Thank you.
The roadway is completed. The houses are completed. Houses are actually under agreement to be sold. I believe Norwood Engineering has been on the, at the roadway. I did not get a copy of the correspondence, but I understand Liz has been updated.
So I gave you guys a copy. Dave's been out there. And there was a letter, I think I just left it for you tonight dated September 29th. Because I think I got it after your packets went out. That there were a few minor edits that needed to be made on the asphalt. But he's reviewed them and then they were going to get a plan submitted by today, which I haven't received. And then I did hear back from Town Council, who said the deed, maintenance agreement and releases are all fine.
So just to follow up on that. I initially had submitted a request for the release of covenant. Right now, there's a planning with covenant on record with the plan as the appropriate procedure. We need to get the covenant released now so the lots, the houses can be sold. And I had two versions of the release form, which are standard. One is everything's done. The asphalt plan's done. Everything's done. It's you guys sign a complete release of covenant. Subdivision file is closed. The other one is not everything's done. We're going to withhold $5,000 or $25,000, but we'll, we'll release the covenant in exchange for posting the cash bond. So I don't want to read into what Liz just said, but I, my suggestion was to take a vote tonight to sign the release of covenant form and that it be held by Liz until whatever those minor edits are made and are submitted through Liz. So we'd have to wait for another month. That would be our request and then we could continue on with the planned sales of the lots at the end of the month.
Question. Is this roadway maintenance agreement, does that go to the land or is that, like if someone sells their house, it's going to be signed all over again? Or it's a go little man?
No, we were required to really draft that, but I drafted it.
I like it.
And I thought, I tried to draft it in a way that we could kind of use it moving forward with others. What I suggested, I, for the purchase and sale agreement, so we signed with each buyer and with each attorney, I sent them that draft maintenance agreement. And I said, if you guys, as the attorneys for the homeowners want to tweak anything, do it now. So you're all in agreement that you're buying a house subject to this agreement. They didn't have any changes, so they're going to both sign it at the time they buy the houses. And in our purchase and sale agreement, said that we will accept the responsibility of supporting that agreement. So now anyone who buys a house on that street moving forward, not only do they have the plan on record that says this is a private way, the covenant that's on record that says it's a private way, but they'll see that maintenance agreement that will stay on record even if the houses change names. In all honesty, buyers of houses don't typically see the plan. They don't do the legal research. They rely on their attorney to tell them what restrictions are on the property they're buying. We're going a little bit extra to try to notify people, so there's no question moving forward.
I think it's a good idea because it's always a question down the road.
Yeah.
Could you just remind me, is the, I went up there today. The roadway, is that the extent of the width of the easement or?
The layout is 40 feet wide on paper.
Yeah.
The pavement's not 40 feet wide.
Okay.
This board, when they, when you approved that subdivision plan, you made it clear that that roadway is designed and intended only to service those two houses.
Right.
Any further development. The road runs into the airbase.
Right.
It's unlikely it would go further. It could go to the, I guess, west if that lot, if that landowner wanted to do something. They'd have to come back to you and seriously upgrade the road, the drainage utilities.
I guess that was my question is, because I, there was a lot of signage. They're basically saying, you know, trespass and keep out.
Yeah, I haven't been up there personally, but it's, it's a neighborhood thing.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if the pavement went to the extent of the easement or if it continues to the west, I guess.
Yeah, there's, there's room on both sides of the pavement.
Okay.
Right, Mr. LaPointe, yeah.
All right. I also guess I wasn't aware of how deep that swale would be. That is a?
It's hard to visualize at times. But it works.
Yeah.
Fine. I mean, as you may know, living in Abington, the muscle field is infamous for its not fully draining soil, but very good draining soil. But we do have to design and build it according to engineering standards. So it's, might be a little overkill that, I can't imagine that swale will ever be filled.
Yeah.
Full. But we were required to do that and we did it.
Yeah, I was expecting kind of just like a little depression and, nope, that's a bunker.
Initially, it was, I think, two feet deep. And it was going the length of the roadway.
Yeah.
But when we started to lay it out aesthetically, it just didn't look right. Because then it was kind of skipping over the driveways. It was in front of the front yards. So we asked it to be redesigned and only take the beginning of the road. And to compensate for that, the town engineer suggested it be a little deeper.
Okay.
So we did.
Okay.
So I brought the release of covenant form that we would ask you to endorse or to sign tonight. And if you deem it necessary, Liz can hold it until that final plan gets submitted and okayed by Norwood Engineering.
Is it, it's completely built though, right? It's, okay. So there's no need to hold back any money if it's done and our engineer says it's all done, correct?
Correct, because it's a private way.
Right.
So it's not, we're not heading to a town meeting to get it accepted.
Right, okay, so it's?
And they're going to plow it and do everything.
So we don't need to hold anything back?
We do not.
Okay.
I guess I make that motion. Liz, just tying onto it till those minor details are taken care of.
I want to do that block with the comments that Norwood Engineering's letter, September 29th.
Yep.
Motion made.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And thanks to Dan and the Jim and the form we ask you to sign. I can notarize it and I'll leave it with Liz. And then I'm sure we'll resolve by the end of the week. Thanks for your time.
Yeah, you want to do the cannabis facilities real quick?
Sure, we can do a quick review of them.
There's not much here.
Liz put in our packets tonight, this is, we're going to discuss the status of the cannabis facilities in Abington. Liz put in our package tonight the status of each one of them. Bud's Goods, Green Harbor, Ashback LLC, NAP and Elevated Roots.
Just to add to this, so I, as requested, I emailed the town manager and asked him if he could provide an update. This is what he sent back in addition to that. Green Harbor, which is at 1410 Bedford Street, is in a bit of a sticky wicket, for lack of a better word. And I have a copy of a letter from the building department, which lists a significant amount of violations. And the structure is unsafe and its occupancy has been prohibited.
Which is, which one?
That with the cat's meow is there. It's the one that a Bud's Helm Street.
It's kind of, kind of tearing down.
Yeah.
Doesn't surprise me. I was wondering, I saw the architect's drawing. I was, I was, I didn't understand, because I knew the building was kind of a tear down. It was.
So the, there's a new team on board. The architect called me today. He said that right now they're focusing on trying to get the building down, but they will be returning.
Same owners or different ownership team?
Um, this is new design construction team. Same owners. And they'll be returning to the planning board. What he told me over the phone was that they were coming back with a smaller footprint and it was going to be out of the right of way on Helm Street. They're moving it back. They're going to create some parking on that side. So I said, we would be here. You guys would be here to look at that when they got it together. So that's the only other, like, building. I haven't heard anything on 678 Adams Street, although the building commissioner told me today he thought they were paving out there last week. So I haven't personally been out there, but.
So this note that's on this document, cultivation will not present the town with any additional revenues beyond typical property tax. When they sell it wholesale, don't we get, isn't that considered as revenue? So do we get 3% for sales?
Retail sales, yes. If we're cultivating, no.
Okay.
But we're not getting anything for the growth anymore. That changed.
How did, when did that change?
Within the last month.
Was it part of that, the state law changes?
Yes.
So, all right, so cultivation no longer counts towards?
We, we get nothing. So say, you know, they move in a cultivation facility across the street from Bud's, for lack of, oh, we're going to get his personal property tax out of that.
Okay, because that's a big deal.
It is a big deal. They've eliminated that. They've eliminated that 3% to, which was more of like a gimme. Here, we're going to give you 3% to cover your costs for police, fire, blah, blah, blah. You now have to justify those costs.
Yeah, that's, it hasn't eliminated it. It's just, you have to document it. Could you provide whatever language that is or where it came from? Because I, that's one piece I hadn't heard.
On the growth?
Yeah, the cultivation, that the sales tax would no longer apply to wholesale sales.
From commission, right? Everything comes from the commission?
Well, they just changed, they just passed a state law. So I don't know if there's a language in that state law that affects that because, I mean, that was one of the reasons we were looking at the 500 Chestnut Street thing was because it wasn't going to be retail sales, but we were going to get a 3% of their wholesale sales.
And that's just not going to happen anymore?
So if that's not going to happen, then it's, doesn't matter how big it is.
It would be personal property tax only.
Yeah. It makes it a lot less appealing. Lot less appealing. Okay. So Elevated Roots, is it supposed to be going into the CrossFit location?
Yes.
Which is across the street from Green Harbor?
Yes.
Was it you I had the conversation with that the thousand foot set apart is only, only for some reason applied to medical or did it apply to all?
I'm not sure. I can look at that. I think it's medical.
I'm sure we could waive it, but?
Yeah.
Technically, that is, I think, one of the bylaws. And these are special permits, right?
Everything but the delivery.
Yeah. So technically?
Delivery just needs a host community agreement, I believe.
But it, do these special permits have clawbacks if they haven't started substantial work within a certain period of time?
That's a tricky question because of COVID. And I'm not sure where that special permit, they used to, they had legislation for a long time that they just kept renewing.
Yeah.
That you could kick. You have any idea about that, Attorney Riley? Special permits? Are we still kicking that can down the road?
To my knowledge, you have to exercise it within, I think it's three years now.
Okay.
And if you're in construction, you're exercising and?
Well, it was a certain level of construction activity.
Yeah.
Like, there's, there's a very large property in town where I would say that they are not doing substantial construction.
There was an issue with COVID where all permits were extended. So you're right, it is murky.
Right.
It's something you probably would check with the building department.
Okay.
If you have a question.
Just because I don't want to get into a situation where people start sitting on these things. That's kind of like a pocket license or a pocket permit. They took steps to eliminate that with alcohol licenses.
Yeah.
So I wouldn't want to get in the same thing with these. So, you know, you'll keep hearing, it's like, oh, we're, we're coming for you. We're, we'll be there next month. Or some other thing pops up and meanwhile, now all of a sudden, it's 18 months have gone by and we don't have any.
Yeah, so being collective, I know, is looking for a new home.
Yeah.
And Elevated Roots hasn't even completed their HCA.
NAP, I haven't heard a good explanation.
Nothing. But that was what, April? March or April they got approved?
When we finished that one? It was longer than that, but.
Maybe.
I, that one's within the three years. I understand that, but still. When we passed the bylaw three years ago, four years ago, four years ago?
For the retail?
Yeah. The first one. And we still only have one open. And we're coming up on the second anniversary of expanding it. We still only have one open. So just slow process, I guess.
Yep.
Oh, so they were calling it a community impact fee. That was 3%?
Yeah.
Community impact with three was 3%, which we now have to document and justify all of it.
Well, I can see where it says if, if it's showing that there's no impact, we're going to come. I can see why they're wondering why we pay the extra 3%.
Because a couple of years, year and a half ago, I started calling around asking like, all right, so what are the rules for spending this money? I even called CCC and CCC said, uh, hard to say. And that was basically their, a formal issue. Just there were no rules on how to spend that 3% from the HCA. So they convinced them that, no, it needs to be documented in an actual expense, not a, like, you can't just hire three cops and say, yeah, they're all due to policing a cannabis shop. But they have to have, you know, direct impact.
More paperwork in the process.
Yep. All right. Thank you for putting that together, Liz.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? All right. Move on to request to review covenant and release lots on Robert English Way.
Hi, my name is Attorney Sean Riley, 500 Washington Street. I am here representing a proposed purchaser of one of the lots. I do not represent the developer of Eagle Estates. In my role as the buyer's attorney, kind of as I alluded to in my previous presentation to you, I did title search and wanted to make sure that if we bought one of the lots up on this five lot, Eagles Estate modification, that there weren't any title issues. Because I always look at it that I don't want my client to have problems reselling it if someone finds a problem that I overlooked. So we put the brakes on buying it until we cleared up what I saw was an issue with the covenant that should have been recorded at the time the Eagles Estate modification plan was recorded. As the board knows, when a subdivision plan is approved, most common act is that the plan gets approved with a covenant. The covenant is signed by the owner of the property and it says, I'm basically not going to sell any houses until I finish the road to the board's satisfaction or until I post money to finish the road and you release the covenant. In this case, what I saw was a plan that was recorded and there was a handwritten note referring to a previously recorded covenant, which I thought was kind of odd because usually the covenant's recorded with, at the same time of the plan. And so when I looked at the book and page that had been handwritten in, it was for a previous covenant for the previous edition of the subdivision. And I didn't think that was appropriate. I thought there really should have been a covenant recorded with the Eagles Estate modification plan. So I alerted the owner of the, sorry, the attorney of the, for the developer and found that the developer had also sold four of the five lots to another entity. So there's lots 3A, 3B, 3C, 3D, 3E. My client, Abington Investments, would like to buy 3A. 3B through E has been sold by, I don't mind mentioning the name. 3B through E has been sold by, I don't mind mentioning the names, Rourke or Eagle Estates to Mento. I suggested that before it goes, when it goes any further, that they should, they should write out a proper covenant, have it signed by the owners of the property, and record it at the registry of deeds, and have it refer to the Eagles Estate modification plan. Much to my chagrin, I got involved and I started doing the drafting myself, because I just kind of wanted it to be correct, for the benefit of my client. So I drafted the covenant, gave it to Mento's attorney and Rourke's attorney, because Rourke still owns 3A, Mento currently owns 3B through E and the road, the new road to be built. They have signed the covenant, the mortgage holder for Mento has signed the covenant, which is the appropriate thing to do, and I gave a signed copy to Liz. I actually have the original for recording purposes. It's our request that the board accept, agree, that that's the way the covenant should have been done back then, we'll get it recorded, so now the planning board has a covenant on record. That would then guarantee control by the planning board over the development of those five lots. And if the road is built to your satisfaction, you can decide when to stop releasing lots. Secondarily, I'm here on behalf of Abington Investments alone, the desired purchaser of Lot 3A. Lot 3A actually is the corner lot of McHugh Circle and the new roadway, Robert English. So it actually has frontage on McHugh Circle. So we don't need to wait for the other road to be built, the driveway comes off of McHugh Circle. So we're asking that lot, that the covenant be accepted and recorded, which then encumbers all five lots, and that the board take a second vote to release Lot 3A, so that that lot could actually move forward being developed. Two separate votes. I know, I was not present at your meeting last month, and I know it's been continued for further discussion, I apologize for not being there. But again, I don't represent the developers, but I'm happy to try to make this work and kind of fix the miscues that happened a few years ago. And I think the covenant that I've submitted and the proposed release of Lot 3A are in line and would basically satisfy the buyer's needs, the board's needs. I know you're familiar with Mr. LaPointe who's at Abington Investments. This is Mr. Kennedy, who is, has a proposal to buy the lots from Mento, that, actually, the street and the four lots. But he is of the same opinion as me, that I don't want to buy it until this is cleared up. And that's why he's been here, making sure that things get cleared up. I'm here to answer your questions, but I'm hoping the board would agree that the covenant that you have fully executed before you is appropriate, and with your approval, I wanted to get your approval before I brought it to the registry of deeds.
Do you have the covenant with items four and five on it that were suggested by Town Council?
Yeah, everything is updated.
I just want to make sure you have the...
Yeah.
Yep.
The covenant that I originally drafted was the form that's in your subdivision rules and regulations, and then Town Council asked us to add some more language, it was no problem.
So just to remind everybody, I gave you a copy of this at the last meeting, which was the one that Town Council had reviewed, and her final words were that it was up to the board whether to sign it or not, that this is appropriate, and, well, I can't say appropriate, but that the language she's gone through and has made sure that is what's in the best interest of the town.
And if we don't sign it, it just...
If we don't sign it, whoever builds the road builds the road, and the road does not get accepted. Which is what she had told me at the start of all of this.
Why make it work great, so it'll just melt, right? That'd be crazy. Don't you, I remember you talked a lot about this, on this particular development, you started noticing the deeds weren't going to the fee and all this stuff. It seems like you've had to correct every piece that's gone in there. Okay.
That, that actually wasn't him, it was Town Council.
No, I know it was...
The first time around, she was like, oh, wait a minute, no, no, no. So that's when he did start fixing it for his clients.
In the subdivision approval letter that the board issued to the developer of Eagle Estates modification, there was language in there, if you recall, that you had to have language in the deeds to alert buyers that there is a bandstand and recreation area nearby. And the deed that's on record now, from Rourke to Mento for the four lots, doesn't contain that language, but just so we're all aware, I don't consider that to be wrong, because I think the intention is, it's the deeds that go to the homeowners, the home buyers need to have that language in there. And I've had discussions with Mr. Kennedy, I don't represent Mr. Kennedy for this purpose, but he's aware of it, because we, we're all kind of in the same boat here, trying to make sure that all the boxes that haven't been checked yet get checked, and we'll try to make sure that gets done. I have...
Do you do work in other towns?
I do a little bit in Whitman.
Okay. Have you ever seen or experienced a situation where a developer just doesn't file a covenant and then sells it anyway, ignoring completely the board's condition and wish, and if so, have you seen how it was resolved?
I haven't seen it. I don't know who wrote the note on there, if, if it was just someone who thought they were doing the right thing, because it's the same lands, or I use the same covenant, that's what I'm assuming happened.
Yeah.
I don't think they understood that, one of the, well, one of the caveats in the covenant is you can't sell it piecemeal, you have to sell it all. Like, Rourke had every right in the world to sell it all to Mento, or to LaPointe, or to Kennedy. But you're not supposed to cut it up, because the lots, the roadway hasn't been completed yet, so there's no legal frontage for anything.
Yeah.
So...
But here we are.
My guess is, Mr. Rourke thought that Lot 3A, because it had frontage on McHugh, could be excluded, and the other lots could be sold as a package. I understand that, there's a little bit of rationale to that, but I think the law looks at it more of, the subdivision is the, all the lots shown on that plan, so it's 3A through 3D. So it may have been an honest mistake, we saw it, we're trying to correct it now, so by recording the covenant, you now have put yourself back in control to make sure that you oversee development, and that the road would be, you know, would be built to the town's specifications. I have full faith in Mr. Kennedy. He has done home building in Abington, and I'm sure I'll somehow get sucked into getting involved with his part of the development. But right now, I am here representing Mr. LaPointe, just for Lot 3A. But it's a two-step process for Lot 3 to be built on, it's a covenant to get recorded, and then release 3A from the covenant. So the other lots and the road, or the new road, would stay under your control.
So while you guys are walking through this process, another, not an issue, so to speak, but Dave mentioned to me that Roslin Street didn't have any roadway inspections while it was being built. And that was something that we used to do all the time, it was required in the decision letters. But PMP also used to include it in the decision letters, and Dave hasn't been including that. So it's not in this decision letter, so I don't know if you want to amend, hold a hearing to amend the subdivision plan next week to include that, not next week, next month, to include that?
Excuse me.
If...
To reopen the hearing and...
Reopen the hearing and include it, or if you guys, maybe somebody could have just agreed to that condition, I mean, we can work that out within...
Agreed to the condition, that's right.
Agreed to the condition that the roadway, we would, at the applicant's expense...
Before the base coat goes on typically?
Yeah, our engineer goes out and looks at it, to make sure the road gets built correctly.
So the engineer makes sure that sufficient base material is in place, so that the road just doesn't crack three years later. It is typical, I mean, with Roslin Street was a private road, so maybe that's why...
Well, he wasn't, he wasn't only concerned about that, and I don't want you to think he was, he did just mention it to me in passing that. That was not a condition, and it always used to be a condition. So I'm bringing it up, because this is a road, and then we have Chain Path Barm is coming up. So I just, I want everybody to kind of keep that in the back of their head, so if there's more than my brain thinking about it, somebody will remember it.
We had had issues in the past, objecting to Mr. Peralta as the engineer, because he wanted to inspect every single part of the road, even though our engineer, whoever it was, the developer's engineers were certifying certain things, I mean, it was, we looked at it, it was billable hour work for him, that's what he was trying to do. Standard inspections and all, I don't think any developer has a problem, they're quite accustomed to it. I think it's a good idea for the town, I think it's a good idea, frankly, for the developer, because if there is something wrong, you want to catch it before you pave it.
Honestly, when I did the research years ago into what I was looking, what I was doing, to accept that kind of responsibility, he doesn't, he's not carrying insurance to take over the responsibility of the project.
The town engineer?
Yeah, the town, no, he had the reviewing engineer. Like, the same way, if I go into a job, I'm not, you know, I'm not going to check how we built, I'm going to make sure that what's there, what was on the plans, and this is what we agreed to, if something changed that I needed to know about. But if I went in, because actually, when I write down, I'm saying I'm observing the construction, I don't say I'm, I'm viewing it or I'm inspecting it.
Yep.
No, it's, it's straight up construction observation. We used to get sheets from PMP that said construction observation at the town.
He stepped, he stepped over that, yeah. Yeah. He never got involved that deep.
It's a, it's, it's a completely different issue on site plans, because now you're on private property, and, but the town obviously has a legitimate interest in a road that would soon be accepted as a public way, you know, night and day. So, you know, I'm sure we can work out some sort of wording or parameters for inspections or whatnot. And Liz and I have talked, and I think the board has talked, this is, this is an instance where, in hindsight, maybe that the board had put a, sometimes put limits, that the roadway shall be, or the work shall be completed within two years or three years, unless extended, which, take COVID out of it, you know, because that extended everything, but there are sometimes a need for a developer to, to need more time, whether it be financial prices, globally or locally, whatever it is.
Oh, I think we're going to be looking at some changes to the way we do business, there's some things that have happened the past couple of years.
Yeah, I think it's a good thing, so everyone knows what each other expects.
My first spiteful inclination is to say no, and just make this a private road, because, again, just to rehash, we bent over backwards and backed down on some rules we usually hold pretty steady on, for someone who probably didn't deserve that many breaks, considering the difficulty we've had with other projects. But at the end of the day, we kind of said, probably against our better judgment, okay, fine, we will let you do this, but you need to do A, B, C, D, and E. And then immediately, the first thing he does, turn around and not do the very basic thing that he was asked to do. And he's just going to walk away with a good check. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of discord on our part about this. However, here's the problem, here's the problem, is that if we say no, we're not going to do this covenant, we're going to let it be a private way, the town's still going to hear all the complaints and problems, if there are any. We do now, that there's private build, private construction built, and the town now has to pick up for people who have not done the job right. So it's kind of like, no matter what, the town is going to fall back on the town at the end of the day.
I understand your sentiments completely, and just to reiterate, I do not represent the former developer of the subdivision, I know you know that, but I'm just saying that for the general public at home. But one good thing is, if we do move forward as proposed and record this covenant, you are effectively, would allow the property to be taken out of the hands of that developer and be purchased and transferred and developed by a, a developer who has shown his prior capable ability to complete the job.
At least for Lot 3A.
Yes, and I think you'll meet and have full confidence in Mr. Kennedy with his Honestly, I don't see any other way around, I don't know that the private road is the way to go. So what we're proposing, I think, is a way to get it done in accordance with the plans, in accordance with the town's specifications.
I've read the materials.
Go on.
Is there bond money left to move?
Yeah, I believe the town is holding bond money.
We are for McHugh Circle.
Right, enough to finish what we, we wanted him to finish.
Finish McHugh Circle, but there's nothing on Robert English Way, because he never did a covenant.
Yeah.
Or covenant released for the lots.
Well, that's...
Right? Right, so the money we have is from McHugh.
But that, that was very specific when we approved that, that he finished the project that he started over 20 years ago.
Right.
Prior to this being done.
So he was, he was supposed to fix...
Our last conversation was, it made sense to hold off on the top coat, because it's going to be big trucks coming, it makes sense, we don't, I don't, I don't like it.
And just so the board knows, Crabtree Lane never got accepted.
What's that?
Crabtree Lane never got accepted.
It didn't?
No. They never filed the paperwork.
Oh.
They're supposed to do something like, within 180 days, and to my knowledge, that never got done.
Wait, so we took the town meeting vote? The town voted to accept it?
Right, and then they need to record some things, and that did not happen.
With a specific amount of time, is that, does that...
That's, yeah, and that's the, I know, and that's, that's the state's timeline.
So the neighbors don't know anything about that.
Yeah, no, I wasn't aware of that, but that means, yeah, you'd have to have another town meeting vote.
They can note of that.
Kind of restart the clock on that.
Yep.
I have nothing to do with that, nor do any of the gentlemen in this room.
No, that just kind of foot stomps our, our issues here.
Did we, so we didn't release all, all the bond money? Do we have money to finish?
We, we released all the bond money on Crabtree, because it was a town meeting vote, and we are holding, I think it was 95,000, is that right? Yeah, I think you were the last one I told that to. But yeah, for 95 grand.
And I asked Dave last meeting, he said that was enough to do it.
Yeah.
I don't like it, I think it cleans up, I mean, we have control if we have a covenant.
I've read this material, and I think it's a way of getting this done. You know, I agree with Bob, certain aspects of this I don't like, but this thing has been going on for a very long time, and not to say that it shouldn't, we should short if this thing is not right, but I read this, and I think this is a way of doing this.
How do we, how do we join the two of them together, that the top coat gets done at the same time? As Robert English, for me?
I believe there's a letter that was issued, that said that you were going to, there was an understanding between Mr. Rourke and the board, that the top coat would be done after Robert English Way was completed, just for the reasons you cited.
Well, technically, wasn't one of the reasons, one of the conditions that he also had to finish all the work in Crabtree?
Yeah, yes, that whole project.
So, I mean, I guess to a certain extent, it did get accepted, it got accepted at a town meeting, the fact that they didn't file the paperwork, I don't know where that leaves that agreement.
That piece at that time was done, to be accepted.
When, when the funds, funds got released, it had been accepted.
Does it need more discussion?
So was that, I guess that was one of the questions, the last meeting, was, was that piece that they both get done at the same time, is that...
And that was the understanding at our party, the reason we're...
Is that in writing, understanding, or is it just...
Um, I don't think it is. I can absolutely email Mr. Rourke and tell him that this became a point of a conversation and that, actually, as soon as you, all your purchases are done, if you can just let me know, and I can give him your contact information, so he's able to contact you, and you're able to contact him when the paving's supposed to get done, and then everybody can...
Yes, that was, that was one of the conditions, and I thought, it's been a while.
It was.
Give us a letter, didn't you?
Does that go with Robert English Way? I assume that goes with it, so he's...
So the applicant will finish his project in McHugh Circle before he begins his project, and then we had to do a letter, so it was a separate letter, which I don't have with me right now.
I guess my point is, that should be part of the sale of Robert English Way, that all that stuff gets done at the same time, somehow, somewhere, I don't know the legalities of it.
All right, so that's an interesting point, where, all right, finish the project at Crabtree, finish the project at McHugh Circle.
And then we did a letter, the clerks, do you have the clerk's thing in there? Because I think that's what they're referring to.
I know of the letter, and one of my conditions of our purchase and sale agreement is that I wanted that letter recorded at the registry of deeds. recorded at the registry of deeds. So that everyone's aware. I know, I don't want to speak out of line, but I know Mr. Kennedy and his attorney have been contemplating getting written agreements with the seller. Yeah, I guess the seller to coordinate who's responsible for what and the timing of things. I mean.
Unfortunately, the other person's hit word is not really.
Yeah.
Very trustworthy anymore.
Mento.
The person that's selling it.
Mento Corp., who I, I really am not familiar with Mento Corp.
Yeah, and I wasn't, I wasn't referring to them.
Right, you weren't referring to them. I know that, general public, we weren't referring to Mento Corp. I actually asked the attorney for Mento Corp. in for Rourke not to attend because I thought it would just be a three hour meeting. So I wanted to try to just say, let me try to clear this up and fix it so we can move on and reset it to where it should have been when the plan was recorded.
There, there is a letter.
Yeah.
That I signed as it was like a clerical error that says he has to do the top coat. I'm not sure if it says he has to win the.
So I guess, do we, do we, at the point of Robert English Way's top coat being done, do we take his bond and then the town works with the new developer to get finish McHugh?
If I recall, the decision to approve Robert English Way said that he had to first finish McHugh Circle.
Right.
Then there was that secondary letter that said, basically adjusted, rewrote the minutes to say, except for the top coat because everyone agreed saving the top coat until Robert English Way was ready for top coat would make sense. They could blend it all in and it'd be clean. So I think inherently it's all going to be done at the same time.
Whether we take his bond or at the same time.
Yeah, well, let's say this, in a worst case scenario, if, if Mr. Kennedy does move forward with the purchase and puts, is ready to do his top coat and Rourke is not scheduling his top coat.
That's what I'm getting.
I think Mr. Kennedy is coming right to you guys to say, release the 96,000.
That's just, that's how, how legal is to do the top coat if he didn't perform. So that's what I'm at.
That's what the whole point of a covenant and a bond is, that you have money to guarantee it get done.
I mean, the, frankly, the neatest thing that would make all of us really happy is if they just also took on the obligations for everything that's left up there. Filing the paperwork, doing the top code McHugh, just take all of that liability. Whatever that does to purchase price, that's, I don't, I don't know. I don't, I don't care. But basically tie, keeping this all tied together because right now, we're now splitting this off into a whole separate thing where the project in this special conditions is going this way and the Crabtree, McHugh Circle issues are staying over here. And there's no reason he has to do any of them. Right? Even the whole reason we tie these together was to force his hand to finally finish these projects 20 years later. So, I mean, that's kind of my preference. I'd love to figure out a way that we can just tie it all together and keep it all together because otherwise it's just never going to get done.
That's the way I asked about.
Yeah.
If we had to take the bond to finish it, say done.
That's a town council question.
Yeah.
But I would still suggest, and I think town council has not, have issued an opinion otherwise, that recording the covenant would, I think, give you more leverage than you have now.
I can email her about the money, but that's still a, a point in the future.
Well, the money, should the money be taken into consideration with the change of, do you talk about changing the covenant or just a, a legal amendment? Is that what you?
No, there was no covenant.
No, there is no covenant.
We've recorded it. Town council reviewed the terminology in the covenant, added a couple of things. So, and I had Rourke sign it because he still owns lot 3A. We had Mento sign it because they own the rest of the property.
Again, I guess at this point, we really need a covenant. I guess we can work out the legalities of the top coat with town council after the fact. Lesson learned.
Yep.
And I don't know if this is helpful or not, but it's cash. So I don't have to deal with it, or you don't have to deal with bonding company or a bank or anything else.
Just that's helpful.
It's very helpful. I can announce this to the treasurer and say, I need a check.
So I guess the clean way is to do the covenant. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Paulos in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I request a second vote to allow me, after the covenant's recorded, that can, will you sign a release of lot 3A? So at least.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
Paulos in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I guess you, you kind of understand where we're at, so.
Well, that's why we're looking at everything three times.
Well, that's the, I mean, these guys do it all the time.
All right, so you're going to record.
You know, amateur builder.
This document that has the four and the five on it?
Yes.
Okay. And it's got their, you have the original signatures?
I do.
Okay.
And this is the repeat of lot 3A that I asked.
I was going to say if you want to sign and I'll hold it.
And Liz will hold it until I bring her a copy of the recorded covenant.
I'm also hoping with the new administration downstairs, there'll be a less passive review of projects that we see in the past.
Thank you for your time and patience.
Thank you for the heavy lift on this.
I asked my client not to buy this lot because I knew everything sucked into this much.
Any chance of, no, never mind.
The rest of it.
All right.
Can I ask you a quick question? You understand why there's a deed writer in here about the property next door?
Yes, I understand pretty clearly.
Okay, just so I make sure. That's all.
Anybody want to attend more of the concerts?
Yes, I have updates.
All right, everyone. The next item on the agenda is discussion of MS4 stormwater name of the permit updates.
I'm sorry, before we move on, could, Liz, could you get us a legal opinion or note as to the legal implications for the paperwork not being filed? Specifically, what it means for town services, what it means for town liability, especially liability. Because technically now, it's still a privately owned road. And I know we've been taking care of it, maintaining it for years and years and years.
Both of them, actually.
Both of them.
Yeah.
But I would just like a legal opinion about what this means technically, legally, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay. I can tell you this has sort of come up before, specifically on McHugh Circle. Wayne was very adamant that the town should not be plowing private roads. And by private roads, he meant those even though they may have been constructed but had not gone through the town meeting process to be accepted. So every year, John Stone and I have a conversation and what he says to me is it's just easier for me to do it because.
You should be sending them a bill.
Send them a bill. Right. And that's what I say to him, let me know, I'll do the bills. I have the contact information. Let me know how many hours you were out there. And like every year at the start of the year, I ask for the plowing rates and I'll do the bills. So I, in conjunction with that, I would send a letter out to those developers and say, like the Mentos for John L. Sullivan, for example, and I'd send them a letter saying, if you don't plow, we have to send our guys out. This is what, this is what it's going to cost you per hour. And when I did that, Mr. Timmons reached back out to the town manager, I believed, and had some statute that he was going to throw at us about like longevity. The road had already been maintained by the town, so we sort of just had to suck it up for lack of a better term. So I will get something from town council on that because it will be beneficial for John Stone to know that as well. And he'll have something to stand on.
Because also that, that road should be coming up soon for repaving. And you certainly shouldn't be repaving it.
No, 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 no. I'll, I'll email John Stone that those should stay off until they're accepted.
Yeah.
So the other covenant is not ready? That was just 3A?
Oh, no. So, so the, so the rest of the lots will be covenant. He's not going to do that until he gets the road in, I'm quite sure. Then he'll come back and ask for the release of the rest of the.
Right, but where is the covenant for English Way? That one was just.
B3A.
I'm holding it. Yeah, he's going to, I'm sorry, I'm not holding it. He's going to record that tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
And then when he comes back with that covenant, which I think I gave you guys a copy of that last month, town council had gone through it.
Yeah.
I will give him that release that's down there. So he can get 3A. And as far as then, I guess Mr. Kennedy will feel more comfortable in purchasing that project from the Mentos.
Does he still have to pay property taxes on the road? If he technically owns it?
Yeah, right now, yeah. Until the town takes it.
Okay.
MS4 zoning. I had a virtual meeting with my friends a couple of weeks ago from San Born Head. They have, we went through these suggested changes and I came up with sort of a calendar, if you will, of what I'd like to try to see that, see what you guys can do. And that we try to tackle the stuff that's labeled zoning in here this year for the annual town meeting in the spring and the stuff that belongs in the subdivision rules and regulations. We kind of push off till the fall, till like maybe a year from now and because you have to hold a public hearing and, and there's going to be other subdivision stuff we're going to do. So we can do all of that next fall and include the stuff that's in the subdivision rules and regulations here if that's, works for everybody. And then the other thing was none of these are required. They're suggested. And they have also agreed to write the changes, to write the bylaws, bylaw changes. San Born Head.
Oh, there's some of them I really like, like.
Yeah.
Surface drainage. Definitely look at some of those more, what do they call it, green swales versus.
Yep.
Storm drains.
I know there was concern about the pavement and allowing pervious materials. There was pervious material concern from John Stone. He didn't want to see parking lots and stuff that would be hard to plow. But all of that can be made very flexible too. Like if you want it to be that way, it can be that way. But like they stay with the same design that exists. But if they want to swap out some of this stuff from pervious materials, it would be up to the board to approve that change. But, but it's, it's, would be allowable, right? It's something that we could add in there.
You mean like an alternative task?
Yeah, yeah. And they're talking about like the, you know, the two feet on the side of the pavement or around buffer areas, stuff like that.
Yeah.
So you're not replacing a ton of impervious surface, but you're replacing some.
Well, it also means for, in the future, that our friends in Adams Street, it'd be a lot easier to, or we'd have some more rules about how they could do an impervious surface versus insisting that they pave it, which then triggers a whole underwater storm thing.
Right. So I don't know. Their suggestion was if you want to move forward with any of these zoning changes, to let me know what ones, so they can get going on them. So they can get them drafted and back to you for.
Oh, was that last month package?
Yeah, you didn't.
Yeah, I didn't bring it this month, but.
Okay.
There are, there are ones that I'd personally be interested in. I can certainly just send you what, I guess everyone can just send you what they, they're kind of interested.
Yeah, if everybody could get back to me by the end of the week, if you have zoning changes you'd like to see move forward, and then I can let them know. Well, how about we leave it this way? If there's something you don't want to move forward, let me know that. And then otherwise I'll just let them do everything.
It'd probably be easiest way to go.
Right? There's not this.
They'll actually rewrite it and not just kind of patch and match?
Well, they'll give, they'll change the section and then we have to update the section within general code. But they will put, they'll do the language.
It's very specific.
One. Two, three, four, five, six. Seven. So there's seven zoning and there's a wetlands bylaw. But I've sent that off to them for them to, by them I mean conservation, for them to review. All right, so I'll leave it. So if the end of the week I don't hear anything, I'll just send them all over the zoning stuff and they can work on that.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Going to move on to budget for FY 2022.
All right. Late addition to tonight's agenda, only because we got the budget packet last week to start working on. And FinCom is looking for everybody to put everything in. So anything you want, we put it in. Doesn't mean we're going to get it, but they kind of want to know.
Yeah.
Like a town planner.
Town planner, yeah.
So I.
I think everybody's getting on the same thought now for the whole town.
So I had a conversation with the town manager and he's not sure we can get a town planner for what we could probably pay them.
Yeah.
And the regional idea ebbs and flows. And he's tried to get ahold of Rockland because he thinks they're trying to hire a town planner and not having much luck. So he suggested as an alternative to put some money in the budget, to hire a consultant to do projects. So if you want economic development, they do that. If you, the affordable housing thing, they do that. He thought that might actually have a better outcome because it would be the only thing the person would be doing or the consultant would be doing. Like they would be solely focused on whatever projects the board wanted them to do. So I told him I would throw that idea out. What you guys think about that?
That's a, a good Plan B. Plan A, as we've been arguing for the past six years, is we need a town planner.
Okay.
I don't like town. I don't know if I, I don't know if I like Plan B.
Yeah. So I think, and I wrote this, Liz, I think she's done a great job illustrating how the town works better when you have someone focusing on the issues that she's been focusing on, going after grants, better coordinating permitting like this.
Yeah.
I mean, she's probably paid for her own salary just in the grants that she's brought in the past year. And I think that'll just be, you know, amplified with a town planner. Besides, you know, there's so many issues coming up that we need, Scott doesn't have the time and Liz doesn't have the time. And I know that every department needs something, but this is an investment in Abington because if you just look at the capital needs, we can't afford them without improving our commercial tax base. So like that alone is a reason we need a town planner. It's just to start to improve the commercial tax base.
So is it the, the wish of the board to hold firm with the idea of having a town planner?
I say we submit two. That way he cuts one. We still have one left.
I can put both things in there, right? It, it doesn't matter. I don't think it's a bad idea to put both things in there. And if they decide that, or if they fund it and we can't hire somebody.
Yeah, I don't want to self censor.
Yeah, no, no. The other thing I thought of while I was getting ready to do some of this stuff, we have some money left over from when Dan did zoning, the zoning changes. And when San Born Head reviewed all of those documents, just for the stormwater piece of it, I thought, how lovely it would be if everybody went through, somebody went through all of them. So I talked to Scott about that too, and he was not opposed to adding to the funding and that, the remnants of that article, which I think might be $10,000. Might be a little bit more, but it's not over, it's not too much money. But to have somebody come in and review our zoning, our bylaws, our wetlands, stormwater. We won't have to do stormwater, wetlands piece too much because San Born Head's already done it. But everything else, correct deficiencies, redundancies, conflicts, if it says this here and that there, get that all straightened out, like the real nitty gritty stuff.
Mm-hmm.
That nobody has a chance to go through and. nobody has a chance to go through and...
That's the stuff that, when I start to read through it, I just lose it because it's all...
Right, because it's, yeah. And so make it a more coherent document. So if that's okay with you guys, I will throw that money in, too, we'll figure out a cost for that and put it in.
Any further discussion on budget for 2024? Okay, moving along to discussion on master plan goals.
I don't really have much to update on that. I can quickly rush down to multifamily, MBTA. Reached out, first of all, let me say, there's a ton of money and there's webinars right now all about this and kind of community master planning around this kind of stuff. In the process of going through some of that, their next round of grant opportunities for technical assistance opens in October. And I thought, wow, maybe OCPC will actually get some money. So I did reach out to them, and they are going to be providing technical assistance, which I think overall would probably be better for the town because they have a better idea as a regional planning agency, who Abington is and what Abington is. So I reached out to them, and we are now on their list for technical assistance. So they were, they're going to reach back out to us, they're going for some training and some other stuff, and they'll get back to us. She thought October was soon, and I'm like, I don't need you to start in October, I just don't know whether I should apply or not. But I'm confident that we're on their list, I have an email from them stating that, so...
When do we have to have our final proposal? It's not this coming town meeting?
No, it's '24, I think, that it has to be done, but we have to continue to be compliant in moving forward. So they are going to help us with that, but complacency needs to be done by the end of December.
What is that consistent for this year?
I don't remember off the top of my head. It wasn't, do you remember? I know you saw that in your thing.
It's a form or something, has to be.
Yeah.
Basically just to show that you're starting to think about it and doing some work on it?
Yeah, so here's the complacency list. Is due, we're a commuter rail community, so 123122, apply for determination of compliance as set forth in Section 9A of the guidelines, or notify DHCD there is no existing multifamily district that fully complies with these guidelines. They're gonna, they're gonna walk us through that. The last one I didn't, it wasn't a big deal, so... And then 7123, we have to have DHC approval of an action plan, and then 123124 is the deadline for adopting new zoning.
Say the last number.
123124 is the deadline for adopting new zoning. For us, it will be June of that year, or May of that year, or April of that year, when we have our annual town meeting.
So we desperately need new housing and you have until 2024 to figure out the zoning?
Correct.
So wait to May of 2024.
Thank you, Liz.
You're welcome.
Discussion on proposed zoning changes.
So again, bring me your poi, your tie and your zoning changes, send them. I'm gonna, I've reached out to town council on the battery, energy storage, if she has anything about that. Other than that, whatever you've sent, I have, and then it will just be those zoning changes. And I've also reached out to the new building commissioner and asked him to, if he has some ideas, to jot them down, and if they're simple enough, maybe throw them into this one, or otherwise we can wait till next year and we do the other one.
We, I guess I have two requests for town council. The first is anything we need to, I guess ways to build in more compliance into our either decisions or bylaws, so that if developers or property owners decide they'd rather take the ask for forgiveness versus ask for permission route, has been happening, is there any steps that we can take to make that not as an appealing avenue? How do we put more teeth into either cease and desists, or fines, or whatever? Second is, I guess more related to our process, do we need to update our process to make sure we don't run into these situations again like we do with here?
So believe it or not, you've seen the decision letter, it said they had to have a covenant, which they misled everybody about and changed it, I mean, they didn't have a covenant. So I guess...
I just find it hard to believe that they can, a developer can have conditions, ignore them, and then there's no repercussions. So I guess, I don't know if there's something that we can do procedure wise where, you know, you know, they don't get a building permit until the covenant's filed, or whatever it is, I guess just to make sure we're doing...
I think what town council said to me in this specific situation was that the party that bought the four lots, not the party that Mr. Riley was representing, they had no idea that this was an issue. So we couldn't, they were blameless, so to speak, so that the only repercussion for that was that the town didn't take the road, that didn't accept the road.
But, you know, can we reopen the hearing? Can we, what other things can we build in if we need to, to address this in the future? I don't know. And I guess the other question for the board is, I still have some proposals from last year that we wanted to revisit. If I bring them back next month, can we spend some time looking at them, just so we get ahead of it and we're not trying to hash this out in February?
That would be great, because that's what usually happens, it gets, we get behind the eight ball. If you want to send them to me, I'll distribute them to everybody and I'll add them to the agenda.
Yeah.
I'll actually give everybody everything I have so far, and you can pick and choose what you want to move forward with, and maybe, and I'll add those ones from the list, whatever moves forward. I won't have the language, but I'll, you can have the ideas. And then you'll have a general idea of what you're looking at moving forward.
All right, last item is the minutes from June, July 2022, June 2022, September 2022, and May of 2021.
I did that just to confuse everybody. Did it work?
May of '21 first? You don't care. Let the past be in the past.
Do May 20, we got a fine.
Make the motion, accept. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, you know, start with July of 2022, or June of 2022.
Make the motion, we accept it.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And July?
I wasn't here in that meeting.
Okay, so we'll cross that out.
You can still vote on them. There's still three of you to vote on them, though.
Okay, right. Someone make a motion?
About July? Actually, could I propose a change? Under 49 Lincoln Boulevard?
Yep.
There was no confusion on our end. There was certainly a discrepancy. That might be nitpicking, but I want it reflected in the...
That's okay.
Minutes that, again, we weren't confused on this end.
It was pretty apparent that somebody does whatever he wants.
Yes.
Okay.
Would someone like to make that motion?
So moved? To move to approve as amended?
As amended. Second tip?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And it leaves us with September. 2022.
So the motion to approve.
Second?
I was not there.
Uh, second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Does anyone else have, anyone else have anything else to talk about tonight?
You have to, one second, you have to continue both those hearings.
That's right.
Yep.
That's right.
So here are the, I have letters from 657 Bedford, Mr. Orwig, and Mr. Riley, I believe, is here for chain path.
I do have one other question after Mr. Riley.
I think we have actually opened the hearing and voted for a continuance.
They opened, they opened the hearing last month.
So it was already continued?
It was already continued, yes. Yep.
See, what, things happen while you're on vacation, Mr. Riley.
So I guess for 657 Bedford Street, I know that they were before you on September 12th, they were going to make some changes and try to submit for this meeting, they weren't able to get everything done because your September 12th meeting was a week later than normal. So we've requested that the site plan review hearing for 657 Bedford Street be continued to your November meeting date.
Has he talked to Dave, do you know?
I don't know specifically.
Okay.
I will be talking to him tomorrow.
Okay.
Someone make that motion?
Motion, yeah. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then we have the public hearing definitive subdivision chain farm path on 40 Rockland Street, and they request the continuance.
Yes, for similar reasons, although really, we are scheduled to meet with the Conservation Commission on October 11th, so we wanted to have that meeting, make sure that the Conservation Commission was satisfied with the plan or had no specific changes to be made before we submitted an updated plan to your board. So we thought a more efficient use of time would be go to Conservation on the 11th of October, and then come to this board in November with what we hope to be a final plan. So we ask for continuance, continuance of that matter to your November hearing.
Make that motion.
Second?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Anything else?
I thought a while ago we were going to potentially get something from 1400 Bedford, Sorrell?
Yes, we were. And I had a phone call from them and they wanted to know if they could use PMP associates to draw the plan. And I said, well, that's not a problem because the board of selectmen took a vote, engineers, they wouldn't be in a conflict. But as it all turns out, they reviewed the initial plan, so they cannot do it.
Which, what are they planning?
Well, there's an issue, they were, did this come up with the deck? But the, the parking is wrong, like what they were permitted to do is wrong, and they're too close to the stream, and they need to pull it back, and they got to do some stuff up there.
Talking about Sorrells?
Yeah.
I just wasn't sure if that was still in the works, or...
Yeah, I will actually email my friend Marion.
Yeah, the patio slack will become in addition pretty soon. It's the roof's on it now, next will be the walls.
I do have to say I did get an email from the building commissioner today, 121 Randolph Street is almost complete, and he wanted to make sure that all the stuff that the board wanted done, got done. I sent down the decision letter, but most of that was done upfront.
Next up is?
The old Bay State Ice Cream. So I was, I think that's a good step moving forward, that conservation and planning are being, are in the loop on the last certificate of occupancy, right?
Yep.
In case there's an issue. I mean, most of the time it's a non-issue at all, but just in case. Right? Yeah, yeah.
Last time we took a walk through there, it's, it's amazing, it's just, you know...
It's crazy, isn't it?
Yeah. They've got their own little community right there.
All right.
All right, nothing else tonight?
Make a motion to...
Motion to adjourn? Second?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good night, everyone, thanks for watching.